Our audience who might be watching at home, we just completed part of an in-camera session. But this is the, uh, this is the public portion of the committee, the whole meeting. And again, as a reminder to anyone who's watching or in the audience, this is a more informal meeting than the typical public meetings we have. It's more of an information collecting session where we get information from administration and staff for us to be able to work, work through at later public meetings when decisions have to be made. Um, at this time, I mean, we're looking for a confirmation of agenda. Does, do any of the councillors have any emergent items to bring up tonight?
No emergent. Emergent.
Emergent.
I, I have some questions.
Okay.
But you know what, listen, listen.
Okay, thank you councillor Peterson. Anything from administration for the agenda?
Yes, your worship. Um, in front of you have a report, item 6.6, Economic Development Strathmore Living Promotion.
Thank you, Ms. Sawatsky. Anything else? Thank you. I should have looked up there. Uh, so councillors, you've heard that, uh, looking for confirmation of agenda as amended. Councillor Montgomery?
I will move that we accept the agenda as amended.
Thank you. You've all heard the motion by councillor Montgomery, all in favor. Motion is carried. And it brings us to delegations for tonight. And our first delegation is item 3.1, the Strathmore District Chamber of Commerce. If there is someone here from the chamber? No one? Do you know if they're coming later tonight councillor Sobel?
No idea, your worship.
Well, I guess we can come back to that at a later time in the meeting. Okay, we'll move on to item 3.2, Mr. Gregory John, who's going to be speaking to us.
Thank you.
And if you wouldn't mind coming forward, if you wouldn't mind, I know I've introduced you, but state your name and, uh, thank you.
Hi, I'm Greg, Gregory John. Yeah. Um, I'm here to, uh, first of all, it's such a pleasure to be talking in front of town council. I grew up here. Uh, some of you might know my parents, Heather and Ian John. And, uh, I, I'm, uh, here to talk today about a project that I've been working on and seeking council funding for. Uh, I have been involved with the Strathmore, um, High School Gay Straight Alliance, or, or GSA, since its inception in February of 2018. And this group of kids is some of the most resilient, brilliant kids that I have seen. And they empower me every time that I step into that room. And, and, and for me, uh, it's a deeply personal investment that I have in helping run this GSA with Jerry Flaws and Julie Wallace at the Strathmore High School. September 4th, 2001 marks the only day that I ever contemplated suicide. And it was around that I was fearful of being outed at Strathmore High School as a gay student. I didn't feel like I had a place to go to. I didn't feel like I had a support system that I could reach out to despite the fact I, I had, I was an academic, I was an athlete, I had incredible friends, and I had an incredible family. So, when there was interest from the students and the teachers to form something like this, of course, you know, there was an opportunity for me to find some healing around my past at Strathmore High School and, and contribute to the community that I still proudly call home. Uh, so, over the first few months, I led the students through development of mission statements and all of that fun stuff. And, and once we got to this place of who we are and a place of identity, we thought, what can we do to change our community, to, to live the value of education and, and spread knowledge around what it means to live as an LGBT student in a rural setting? So, we landed on having a GSA and Diversity Summit, which will be held on October 11th and 12th here in Strathmore. Uh, it is going to be a celebration of diversity, it's going to be a celebration of community. And, uh, I am seeking $10,000 from the town to put towards this initiative. Um, to date, I have $5,000 from Bank of Montreal. I have, which is interesting, you know, they're, they're, uh, I have good network at Bank of Montreal, but, you know, they don't even have a branch in Strathmore. So, it's kind of a, a testament to the initiative itself that, uh, they, they would support this in the amount of $5,000. Now, that $5,000 is going towards, uh, all of the workshops and programming and will come to support a little bit of our keynote speaker, who I'll speak about later. Uh, on, on September, or sorry, October the 11th, it's going to be primarily focused on, uh, the Students' Day. So, we will be inviting all of the GSAs from Red Deer South, including, uh, including Calgary, to participate in, um, uh, workshops. We're still just landing on who the workshop providers are. There are some in Calgary, I know. We are looking for local content as well through the Crisis Society and, and others. And, and that's what the kids, uh, and students are focused on is, is, is what do they want to learn? What do they want? So, you know, I could speak of what I would like, but that's, you know, that, that's, uh, that's still to be decided. And, and we're going to be landing all, on all of that next week. Um, I lived in Los Angeles after I got laid off, um, from Trans-Canada Pipelines for two years and, and which allowed me the amazing opportunity to network with some pretty cool people. So, uh, I have just signed a contract, uh, to bring Ross Matthews, who is from Celebrity Big Brother, RuPaul's Drag Race, and The Jay Leno Show, to keynote for our community and, um, Student Days. Uh, he grew up in a small Washington State town. And, you know, it is your stereotypical kind of, I, I hate even saying it, but, uh, he's pretty flamboyant. And, you know, as, as a, as somebody in the 1990s, growing up in a small rural town, I'm sure he faced a lot of things. And, and the, the focus of the speech is going to be centered around how he overcame that and how, how did he become a Hollywood celebrity from, from that? And, and I think it's a really important intersection that we celebrate because, um, a lot of, I, I know if I had somebody to look like, if he can do it, I could do it, you know what? Maybe I would have been a little more direct on finding the success I have today. And, and if I can show the inspiration behind, or if I can inspire some of those kids, whether, and, and I'm talking about the entire student body, on, on celebrating who they are as people to get to a place of purpose in life, um, you know, he, uh, you know, that message from a Hollywood celebrity, you know, I, I know will resonate with not only the students on, on the GSA Day, but he will be replicating his keynote speech for a community event to be held on the Friday evening. The community event will be at the Civic Centre and, uh, Pat helped me book that. And, uh, so, and, and actually just about a half an hour before this, I just received confirmation that we will be welcoming Jordan Whitzel from Global Television. He created an amazing, uh, TV series called Pride Without Prejudice. And it was a five-part series that was screened during Pride, uh, just over, over the September-long weekend. And, and there's going, we're going to be showing every, uh, uh, all five parts with a bit of a commentary. And, and I think one of the most impactful things that I, I took out of that, that, that series was, he was a bully and he admitted it on air. So, you know, we, these are not coming from necessarily privileged perspectives. And you know what? It takes a lot of humility to be a, um, somebody on air and to admit that in front of, you know, of, you know, sometimes vicious online community. And, and I think, uh, you know, that, that's going to be, uh, that's going to be the two parts of the community session, um, Jordan and then Ross. But, uh, before that, we will be having a bit of a street fair held in the Strathmore High School Street, leading down to the Civic Centre, which includes, uh, which will include between 15 and 20, uh, community resources, whether they be from Strathmore or, or, uh, I know we will be welcoming, um, the Calgary Men's Chorus, which is, uh, uh, an amazing arts organization. You Can Play, which is an, an organization supporting LGBT youth in sports. And, and just helping to show the community that there's positive ways to, you know, live and then celebrate your own diversity. So, uh, I, 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 I'm so excited to be presenting this. And, and now that we're exactly a month away from this, uh, you know, I, I asked town to consider that, uh, the $10,000 investment will not only create, um, uh, an opportunity for students to have, uh, the opportunity to grow into themselves, but a community that can celebrate who we are. So, if there's any questions, I'm happy to, to answer any.
Thank you. Councillor Corbiel.
Thank you, your worship. How many people are you expecting?
Uh, so, we do have capacity for 300 student delegates, uh, just because of the size of the Civic Centre. And I anticipate, given the amount of interest I've had to date, that we will hit that number. Uh, there will be an opening ceremony for the, uh, for the GSA Summit, which will be held in the Strathmore High School gym. And, and that will include, I am still waiting on confirmation from the Premier's office, but the Premier has, uh, expressed an interest of being there, as well as Minister Miranda from Culture and Tourism and Minister Egan and, uh, local MLA and the MP have been invited as well. And, and that has capacity for 700.
And last question, are you selling tickets for this? Is it a free thing?
This is free.
Okay, that's, thank you.
Thank you councillor Corbiel. I was going to call you Montgomery. Councillor Montgomery!
Uh, thank you. Um, so, with this $10,000, would that be kind of the final piece that you need? Or are you looking for funding outside of that as well?
I, 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 I am a professional fundraiser. So, I do a lot of this work and, and I am in the process of securing $20,000 from, uh, the, the provincial government. And then I have, uh, this is a $40,000 project. So, it, uh, I have $5,000 from Bank of Montreal and $5,000 pending with a local sponsor that I'm still working on. Cause I'd love this to be sponsored, like, presented by a local Strathmore, um, business. And, and to me, that's important. So, it, uh, we're, uh, just, uh, we confirmed a lot of the details today with the, and, and the province was waiting on that. And they're pushing it through their program, which is pretty cool because, uh, the deadline is September 15th and they're already reviewing this and hoping to get the check out in the next few weeks, so.
Um, and so if, if you were to get them $10,000 and you were not able to, let's say, get the rest of the funding that you needed, what would, uh, what would happen to the money?
To me, that's not an option. And, and, uh, I, I have amazing network that would come and rally around this initiative. And I've had a lot of local support rally around and, and ask if there's opportunities to sponsor this. Um, there is a way. And, and the, the money would not go to waste.
Okay, thank you. Thank you councillor Montgomery. Councillor Sobel?
Thank you, your worship. And thank you, Mr. John, for your presentation. Uh, speaking of, of programs such as the one you're getting the money out of the province of, of Alberta, hopefully, uh, have you had an opportunity to, um, to seek out our community grants program for this fund?
Uh, I, I am aware of the community grants program. And, and certainly, uh, I have not done the formal paperwork, uh, but I have that for another initiative that I'm supporting, which is, uh, the Performing Arts Festival. So, I'm aware of the process and certainly can, can get that to you if that's something that's required.
Well, I, I, you know, I don't know if it's required or not. I mean, ultimately, our council has to make a decision on this. But the, the thing I like about the community grants program is, is it requires some, some, uh, some, some facts, some paperwork, uh, budget, et cetera, which is all stuff that I will be seeking before I would ever agree to $10,000. I want to know where that money's going and, and, and following up with, with councillor Montgomery. Uh, you know, uh, and one of the problems is, uh, we've been burnt before as a, as a council, so I don't want to go down that road again. And I'm not suggesting for a second, we're going to get burnt here. But, uh, there is, there is some, some due diligence that we have to, uh, I think properly, um, go through. So, um, I'm, I, I, this sounds like, and I don't know, but it sounds like a program that, that is best going through our community grants program. That would, that would be my only comment.
Sure. And, and just to, uh, uh, because of the grants that I've had to write for the SET programme through the Alberta Government, all of that's available and, uh, it's just a click and a send, really, so.
Thank you councillor Sobel. If I could follow on yours, um, Tracy, I don't want to put you on the spot, but how are we timewise, as far as applying for community grants, funding in that program? If you wouldn't mind coming up, thanks.
So, unfortunately, um, it's kind of bad timing. Uh, we had a meeting on Monday with the CIS Grants Committee. Um, that being said, at council's direction, we can try to have an, an emergency committee meeting and get it in front of council before the event.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Tracy. That makes a lot of sense. And, uh, as we move forward, that may be something we look at as a council, as far as, uh, getting a plan brought to us or brought to them so that we can fund it that way if, if it's decided that way. But, uh, thank you councillor Sobel. Deputy Mayor Bauer?
It's nice to hear your presentation, Gregory. Thank you very much for coming. I'm an ally and my son is, uh, trans and, um, I'm a part of the LGBTQ community. I've had a lot of exposure and I've never seen an event like this in southern Alberta. So, I commend you for organizing this grassroots and for choosing our community. Thank you very much for that. It is hard to be in a rural community in southern Alberta and, um, be part of the LGBTQ, uh, family. Um, but they also have exceptional supports in place. Uh, one of those that I'd like to bring forward is the Skipping stone foundation. Are you familiar with?
Yeah, I, I, I've gone.
Lindsay piece? Okay, so, um, and I would-
Yeah.
-support you getting into, in touch with them and having them come out as well. They can also help access additional funds for you too.
Wonderful.
Um, as well as Dr. Chris Wells out of the UV. Uh, he has, uh, funding available at his fingertips. And, uh, I was just wondering, have you gone through him as well?
No, I haven't.
Okay, so I'd like to just suggest that.
Let's go.
Um, if you were able to meet the requirements that, um, that we have, I would absolutely support this. I understand that there's a few hoops that you're gonna, we're going to need to jump through in order to secure you the funding because this is a quick turnaround. But, uh, if you were able to do the due diligence and provide us with the financials that we need, um, I'd be willing to support it. But, uh, it is a very quick decision that needs to be made. And I don't know if all those things will fall into place, but if they do, you have my support.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you deputy mayor Bauer. Councillor Peterson?
Thank you, your worship. I appreciate you being here and I appreciate the courage it takes and the support that you're giving to our local students. So, my first question is to administration and perhaps to Tracy with regards to what opportunities council might have to work outside of what is clearly, as councillor Sobel identified, our normal bounds? And, and is there opportunity for council to act outside of that?
Um, so, council has, has the authority to approve any funding as you see, as you see fit? If you want to go through the program, the policy does state that it goes through the, through the committee. Um, but, um, you do have the power to, to circumvent or, or approve it through other, other funds, um, outside of the CIF program.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So not helpful. Um, no, I, I am teasing you. No, that wasn't helpful. And, and clarifying, and I appreciate it. And so, so, um, my, my next question is, is, uh, with feeling, thinking about this going forward, have you had any contact with, uh, with our Indigenous community in, in terms of, um, and the reason I ask that is because, uh, I have involvement with a group of young people who, um, through the Alex and, and other support systems are working to, uh, put together a support group, uh, on this Sikna Nation. And, uh, and are very, very, um, keen to find supports as well and to find alliances. And they'd be, they'd be very interested in that.
Uh, oh, sorry.
No, that's good.
Okay. Uh, and, uh, you know, my mom and, and so, uh, I'm Métis. And it's an important intersection and importance that we include not just municipalities and, uh, but also our Indigenous community. It's an important personal, um, thing for me as well. And, and, you know, school just got back last week. So, so we've been, I've been there every single day.
Yeah.
You know, they're, they're considering an office, I think. No kidding.
Yeah.
But, you know, uh-
They've got a few courses.
Yeah, right. Uh, it, you know, that, that is something that was, uh, has been considered and, and certainly, you know, with, with, uh, you know, my personal network and certainly I'm, I'm happy to, you know, connect indirectly with your network to, to-
Well, and it would be interesting to see if, you know, if Sichica would offer support. I, I think that, that there would be an openness to that.
Yeah.
And certainly, I, I know that my Indigenous students often feel like they're left behind by the LGBTQ community.
Yeah.
And so, I, I think that, you know, that from my perspective, that would be, um, another avenue, you know, and the Alex as well, you know, to, to look for. And, uh, I, um, I'm very, very much in favor of having this happen in our community. And if there is any way that we can work through the vagaries of our bureaucracy, um, you certainly have my support.
Thank you. And, uh, you know, just as, uh, a note, about half of our students that enter that GSA every, every day or every week are Indigenous, so.
Yes, and I know that.
Yeah.
And, and one of the things I'd also like to say is that, um, you know, in, in the 20-some years ago, when we opened the Outreach School, that was a major consideration in, in opening that program. And initially, you know, 30 to 40% of our student population-
Yeah.
-were students who had not found any kind of belonging in their, in their mainstream schools.
Yeah.
So, I appreciate what you're doing very much.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor Peterson. Councillor Cox?
Thank you, your worship. Um, again, I'm gonna go to Tracy.
Yep.
Tracy?
That makes more sense.
If we go ahead through the committee, do you have, just because I'm not familiar with the committee itself, is there, um, limitations as to amounts?
Um, he would fit within, he would fit within our limits at his $10,000 request.
Okay, thank you.
For a large scale event.
For a large scale event, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Tracy Simpson, come on. I have one question for you.
[laughing]
And I have a couple of questions for you, if you wouldn't mind, Gregory. Uh, my question for Tracy while you're here again, um, the, if this all goes through and Greg is successful in, in having this come through and the funding comes through for him as well, uh, the fees for the rental of the hall, they're obviously, would they be considered nonprofit? Uh, how would that be as far as the hall rental, since they're, they're tentatively booked right now?
Yeah, absolutely. So, I would encourage them to put that in their application to include the hall as part of our, of our donation. Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, just to-
Can I have a follow-up on that?
Sure.
So, so, uh, the $20,000 from the government is, is being run through the Strathmore High School Education Foundation, which is a not-for-profit, so.
Yeah. So, they would, they would qualify under our program.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Can you follow up on that?
Sure.
So, what, what is the, the, we have a current limit on that?
We have a-
A yearly limit, correct?
Correct. We have a budgeted amount, um, that we set in our annual budget. I don't know where we're sitting today.
Yeah.
I'd have to look that up. I don't, I know we haven't hit our limit, but I just don't know where we are in between. And we did, um, review three applications on Monday with the committee as well. But I, I don't have those numbers with me. Yeah. Six left?
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
But, based on, uh, the, the question.
So, there's a balance of 15 left in the fund for this year. Um, but we do have three on the books, um, that we reviewed on Monday. We are aiming to bring those requests to council at the October 3rd meeting. And so, if given direction from council and the application got in in a timely fashion, we could, um, potentially review it and include it in that.
So, there's $15,000. There's three applications.
So, then it would be between four.
So, be, with, with this application, it'd be four.
Can you tell us what the amounts are on those other three?
Uh, uh, sorry, I wasn't at the meeting, so I can't speak to that. So, maybe Mark was maybe a part of that here.
Actually, we have four, with the Blackfolds Rodeo, that's coming back to, to council. Um, that request is for 5,000. We have, I think, the Celebration of Lights, which is at, requesting for 10,000. Um, there's a Hope Bridges, uh, for about $2,000.
One more that's under.
The Whirlers, the, uh-
Weetland Whirlers?
Thank you. For, I think for about $750. Okay.
So, there would be five, sorry. Five's left.
Thank you. And congratulations on your counting there, Mark. That was really, really well done. The fingers were going, that's good. Uh, thanks. That's the only question I have for you, Tracy. And Gregory, I just had a, a few questions for you. First of all, I want to commend you two. I, I had the privilege of teaching you and Gavin, which was more of an adventure than a privilege sometimes. But Gavin, we know well. Yeah, make sure to tell them. Anyone who would be Tim Johnson from, yeah, okay, we don't have to go there.
It's kind of a, yeah.
Yeah, we'll never live that one down. My question-
He hasn't changed.
Yeah, that's great. My question is, um, easy one question on the, on the facility. As far as the festivities, the, the events going on during the school day, is that taking place in the school street or in the, the town part of the street down by the swimming pool?
Uh, so, are you referring to the street fair?
Yes.
Okay, so the street fair would be in the Strathmore High, so like going from the gymnasium down through the, um-
Okay. And do you have a, a time of starting for the October 12th sessions in the, in the-
Uh, yes, uh, six o'clock.
Okay.
Uh, the street fair runs from six to seven.
Okay.
And then the event with Jordan Whitzel and Ross Matthews starts at seven. And then it's an hour and a half.
Okay. And a couple of questions. I had a meeting with, I think you met with them as well today, Mr. Larson at the high school.
Yeah.
And one of the, one of the things that, uh, you guys are breaking new ground here, and I think it's, it's courageous and it's, it's good for our town and area and it's good for Sichica Nation as well. Um, one of the things he's concerned of, and I, and I'm hoping, and maybe suggesting that you can try to be prepared or aware of this, is his concern and his fear was for students who choose to go to the activities and, and suddenly they might feel that they've formally announced what, what they feel or who they are. And do you have steps in, in place to help them if, if there are some incidents that come up with someone attending and someone saying something to them?
For sure. So, uh, the reason, one of the reasons that I'm involved is to be that, um, first person to step into the room. Uh, there, all of this is optional for all the students. So, this is not something that, um, you know, this will be an option for all students to attend, but also for the GSA to partic, actively participate in. You know, I understand that there's, you know, a bit of, um, you know, I was that student, you know, candidly, um, that was fearful of who's, who knows? Uh, and, uh, so I, I'm very, very aware of, of, of being, uh, careful around that. So, uh, you know, over the next three, four weeks here, we, we are going to be, uh, planning all of, uh, all of the elements without student involvement and then allowing the students to participate as comfortable with the, the understanding that five minutes before the event, they might change their mind as well. So, there's a contingency plan based on, uh, you know, Jerry Flaws and Julie Wallace and myself taking the lead on a lot of the, the public stuff, like, and, and as mentioned, um, uh, the option to participate, actively participate. Um, I spoke in, in length with Karen Harris yesterday about how the council department can get involved and, and how, and, and some of these conversations around bullying, um, and, and diversity and, and minority groups can be triggering and, and certainly can elicit, uh, you know, I, the last thing I want as a kid to be traumatized or re-traumatized by, by this. So, there is going to be a debrief session that all students have that participate, that go back to their TA groups, that has several discussion questions. And, and the opportunity in a smaller setting of, of between 25 and 30 students to talk through some of this with active participation or just active listening. So, Karen Harris is, is very excited to, uh, contribute to, uh, the, the safety of the students in this manner. And certainly, it's been thought of and, and, and we're, we're on it.
Okay, thank you. My other question is tied into you breaking new paths here. This is a conservative area still, and I'm, I'm always concerned about the backlash you may feel as a, an organizer and that. may feel as a, an organizer and, and that, but I'm also thinking.
No kidding.
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll give you a hug later.
Okay.
What I'm, what I'm, I know some of the public will want because these are minors, these are students who are underage.
Yeah.
Will there be some vetting done as to what the, the keynote speaker might say, what his, what his, uh, program might be like so that they're not saying things that might be offensive or, or that parents might feel is a little too much?
Absolutely.
That's the only other comment I had.
Yeah, absolutely. And Kyle and, and the administration team at Strathmore High School and I have been really, this is, this is probably one of, oh, and, uh, Bevan Davenport, the superintendent, we had a meeting yesterday, and this was his main concern as, uh, several times even burnt by, you know, just trusting that the message will stick to the message. So, uh, in having signed the contract to bring Ross Matthews and, and, uh, I think Jordan Whistle's a little more, uh, a little easier to bring in. Um, uh, we will be setting up a Skype meeting with Ross and the administration team at Strathmore High School just to, to, uh, to have Ross hear their concerns and, and, and certainly, uh, help direct, um, the speech and, and, uh, you know, uh, you know, the talking points that are hit, ones that we shouldn't hit, and, and certainly, you know, remove the landmines where possible. Um, I, I am, I am not, uh, I, I do this for a living. I, I live in, uh, indigenous reconciliation and LGBT advocacy, so this is not something that I just decided one day would be cool to do. This is what I do as a job, this is what I do as a career. So, I, you know, there, there's, uh, while I have, um, I, I'm more willing to step into areas that people aren't, I realize that's people, some people aren't still, right?
Thank you. Yeah, and the only reason I mention it is I've been at Strathmore High where we've had motivational groups and speakers, and sometimes they'll say something and you kind of wish they wouldn't have said it that way in front of the crowd.
Yeah.
Uh, Counselor Peterson?
Thank you, your worship. You may have already answered the question, but, but in anticipation of you coming tonight, when I was, uh, updating my, my research around this, one of the things that, that I was really shocked to find was, uh, across North America, but even higher in some states and in Alberta, was the percentage of bullying reported by junior high students that, um, mo, nearly seventy percent of junior high school students reported, um, bullying around, uh, um, around children who were gay or, or on, on the LBGTQ spectrum. And I'm wondering if they will be a part of this.
Um, that has to be, that has, that discussion has to happen with, uh, Kyle and, and certainly, Linda Tucker over there, is it still? Uh, I know Linda and Ann Paskovich and, and some of the, the teachers out at the junior high have reached out to me personally, asking how we can, how we can create an opportunity for junior high students to participate. Again, where comfortable and where appropriate and, and so, I just needed to get past the first week with the high school.
Right, right.
And, and, uh, you know, I, I would say we're ninety-five percent there, uh.
Yeah, and I, and I know that I'm, I'm talking to somebody who totally understands, but, but I was, I have to admit, I was surprised to find out that rates of bullying were more than twenty percent higher at, among junior high school students. And just thinking if there was an opportunity to, to even bring portions of this into that environment, you know, uh, going, going forward.
Mm-hmm.
It, it might be incredibly useful and, and again, in addition to that, then suicide rates among junior high students are, are much higher and, uh, as are all kinds of other associated ideations.
Mm-hmm.
So, it would just seem to be a, a really, um, advantageous opportunity.
Well, well, my hope is that this is not just a one-time.
A one-off, yeah.
You know, I, I think, um, the town took steps to support the, the gay rodeo for many years here and, and, you know, I was even shocked when it came here, so, uh, you know, I, if, if we create space for something like this, you know, I think that's an opportunity to preserve it and step into it and build walls around it so that we can, uh, you know, make, uh, not, not only step into the space, but maintain it for, for more than just one year. And, and these conversations are not going away. They're, they're getting worse and, and suicide is, is a real, uh, a real, uh, um, a real thing in our community and, and, you know, I don't know how many people remember just a few weeks ago, a nine-year-old child in, in the United States ended his life for being bullied, for, uh, for being gay. Um, and, and, and those types of stories only fortify my resolve around what I do. And I think, um, we need as voting age and, and active adults in our communities, step up for those kids, that, that they should never be forced to have that choice at nine years old, you know? And, and like I said, uh, you know, if, if we make this space this year, there's nothing saying that we can't maintain it over the, in, into the future.
Thank you, Counselor Peterson. Deputy Mayor Bauer?
I'm prepared to make a motion. I, um, can I move that the CIF?
We, we have to rise.
Oh, right, because we're Committee of the Whole.
Not in Committee of the Whole yet.
That's right. We're not.
Not yet.
Motion away.
Am I able to make a motion? All right, thank you. I, uh, I move to direct the, uh, CIF to review the request for funding of ten thousand dollars for the Diversity Summit, pending approval of financial statements and meeting the requirements from the, from the, uh, committee.
Thank you for that, Deputy Mayor Bauer. Counselor Peterson?
Your worship, I, I have a problem with the motion, and that's only because I know that the other four pe, four organizations that, that, uh, brought forward the, the grants under the current legislation rules and process, uh, are going to be, um, justifiably upset over this because they're, they're going to see that they followed all the rules and you didn't and, uh, and, and, you know, why would, why would we do this, uh, um, wh-when they followed all the due process? And, um, I certainly know because that certainly was the case when we didn't have the process in place. I would be more than happy to support a, uh, motion to go ahead with this, um, for this year on a, on a one-time, uh, uh, process so that in future, if we wanted to build those walls around it that you talked about, that, that we would, um, then have the opportunity to do so. I think it's, I think it's a really, really good place to put an investment in, um, in the, into the welfare of community. I, uh, I'm very much in favor of doing it, and I recognize that, uh, there was an opportunity to do the due diligence around it in this time, but I, uh, I'd be very, very supportive of, of supporting a motion, uh, to fully support it in this year and, uh.
Thank you, Counselor Peterson. Having heard that, Deputy Mayor Bauer, are you comfortable withdrawing your motion?
I am, yes.
Okay, and Counselor Sobel, did you want to speak to that?
Well, just to comment that we do have a process in place that's there for a particular reason, and I would much sooner see that process follow until such time that we have to make a decision. I'm prepared to make a decision on this, but I don't think this is the time to do it. Uh, I don't have enough information in front of me, first of all, to, to support this. Uh, and that's the purpose of the, uh, of our grant program, is to get that information in place. Uh, we don't even know if the other applications are successful. Um, I, I, I think we're jumping the gun here and, and I really would, uh, like to go ahead with Counselor Bauer's, uh, motion and have, uh, administration come back to us i- in due course with, uh, with the, uh, application in, in place and, and with their recommendations on this. And by all means, then, let's make a decision.
Thank you, Counselor Sobel. Counselor Cox, then we'll go to Counselor Peterson.
Thank you, your worship. I agree with Counselor Sobel in the sense that I believe we should at least start with the Community Grants Program. Um, my concern is, though, that we give significant structure to the ones that are already applied, and that leaves only a balance of five thousand dollars. So, that stresses me in the sense that he's asking for twice that. I don't know what happens in that case, then maybe we come back with another motion? Thoughts?
Tracy, comments?
Oh, yeah, please do.
Um, previously, we've run into this situation before where we've had applicants, um, apply for more funding than we've budgeted, and we've brought in recommendations to council to consider funding and pulling from, from Missouri funds. Um, so, we've been in this situation before and, and that's the, the avenue that we've gone. And so, we're open to that avenue.
So, what you are saying is i- if he puts in the application for the full ten, we do have the authorization, we can authorize the full ten to be dispersed?
Council can authorize.
Yeah, okay. Well, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Bauer? Sorry, then Counsel Peterson.
My apologies, my.
Okay, Counsel Peterson?
So, so I'm, I'm, I'm fine to, to go with that. I, I guess my point is that I support this. I think it's not just critical for our community, uh, I think that it's, um, important for us going forward in terms of building an inclusive community. I think that we could get the due diligence that Counselor Sobel's asking for, I think we could get it in, in due time. And, um, and so, I, I guess what I would like to see is, is to not have to, um, you know, there's, if you, if you send the CIF grant in, then we don't have to have the motion, and then we can simply deal with it next week, am I correct, Mark? So, then we could simply deal with it next week in whatever way we wanted, and we would have the information that Counselor Sobel's requesting and, um, and we would allow for that certainty and predictability around, around this. And, uh, I, um, I do think it's of critical importance.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Peterson. I, I think you can tell by the, the demeanor of council that you're getting a lot of support in, in, in for the, the topic. But myself, I, I feel comfortable too with going through the procedures and, and the perception to the public that we're following the rules for various groups. That being said, if we can, if we can work on the timeliness and if you can connect with, uh, our staff.
How's Mark?
That's perfect. If you can work at it with Tracy.
Yeah.
So, um, Deputy Mayor Bauer, did you want to repeat your motion then as far as?
We don't need it.
We don't need, we don't need it because we're going to be.
You guys are going to contact each other and then?
Yeah.
All right. Okay, sounds pretty good. Okay, thank you. So, thank you very much for coming in, Gregory. I think, uh, you're, you're doing a wonderful job as far as protecting some of our students who are in vul, vulnerable situations, and I think our community in general is ready for this kind of thing. We, we know that we have to look out for these, these children. They're still our, they're still our children, they're relatives and friends, and thank you for doing all this for you, for us.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, item four, confirmation of minutes from the July eleventh, twenty eighteen Committee of the Whole meeting. Do we have to go into Committee of the Whole for this? Joe, no?
So, move, your worship.
Thank you. Counselor Peterson has made that motion all in favor.
Move to, uh, go into Committee of the Whole, your worship.
Thank you, Counselor Sobel. You've all heard the motion, all in favor? The motion is carried, we're now in Committee of the Whole. Items from administration, item six, six point one, the Kinsman Pump House demolition replacement on page thirteen. Ryan Roycroft, welcome, Mr. Roycroft.
Um, yeah, I'm trying to make this brief, so as, as part of the, um, Kinsman projects this year, uh, council will see in their packages, um, just some photos of a really decrepit old pump house, great, uh, great in Kinsman. Don't know how better to put it than that.
I just don't get how it's passed by. It's decrepit, decrepit, me. Look at it, me.
It, it's worse than it looks, especially inside. Um, so, part of the, the projects this year were to remove it. And, um, the, the structure itself can easily be removed, but the pillar, um, is a good monopore concrete pillar that would, uh, that, you know, cost a fair amount to remove. As we sort of began to price up the removal, it was, came in at least fifty thousand dollars and, and possibly more. And so, operations staff charged with that, and this is why I'm really happy with operations on this, is, um, came up with the idea of rather than just, you know, removing the pump house, removing the pillar, would be constructing a little dumper. Um, just as a little observation thing, people can walk on it, uh, nice and easy to make accessible because we have that pillar, they'll, that'll outlast us all. And budget-wise, it came in substantially less than removing it. Um, so, yeah, staff just wanted to bring this item to council's attention. We did include a motion, it is within the budget and it's within the scope of the project, um, but if council does wish, if council supports it and wishes to rise in reports, um, they could give blessing to this project. I think that kind of concludes staff's remarks here.
Thank you, Mr. Roycroft. Counselor Sobel?
Thank you, um, your worship. Um, just two things. First of all, I, I just want to, I commend, uh, staff for, on this project. I, I think it's a, first of all, I think it's a absolutely brilliant, um, project, but I especially like the fact that it came from, from staff. I mean, this is, talk about thinking outside the box, this, I, I, I just think it's, uh.
Are you going to say everything I was going to say?
Yep. Absolutely, so you can just relax. You're the deputy mayor.
Yeah.
Um, but my question is, uh, is there any lighting there?
There's lights not too far away. Lighting, did you say?
Yeah, lighting.
Yeah, your worship, I think it's just on the path there.
It's on the pathway on both sides, there's fairly, fairly close.
Yeah, because it's on either side of that sign.
Yeah, I ju, I just always get, you know, there's walkway, I just want to make sure that we're not, we're not introducing a, a, a situation that's dangerous if this is used at late at night, et cetera. So, I, I, if somebody can, can ensure that there's enough light to see something on there, but, uh, other than that, um, well done, brilliant. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sobel. Counselor Peterson?
My, my question, just to follow up, is a safety one. I know that right now, um, I've had a few, more than one occasion, to see kids go under the building. So, will there, they won't have that opportunity with the dock?
Uh, your worship, with regards, I suppose a sufficiently motivated kid can make very poor decisions, but it'll be, um, you know, the dock will extend outwards and over.
So, it'll be farther right and then down?
And more difficult to see, right? Right now, um.
And, and it is that space underneath the current pump house that provides the incentive for adventurous youth.
Your worship, um, I believe the lawyer's always called it an attractive nuisance right now, which is why it does have to come down.
All right, thank you. But.
One way or another.
Thank you, Counselor Peterson. Counselor Montgomery?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to commend you guys for, uh, I guess looking for ways to save money and, and actually provide, uh, some sort of amenity to the community, so good job.
Uh, your worship, well, I wish I could take credit for this, um, credit goes to Craig and his team, they're, as they begin to take critical looks at more and more of some of the infrastructure and just the, the things we're proposing, um, getting around a really neat solutions lately, so full credit to Craig and his team.
Thank you for that, Counselor Montgomery, and, uh, Counselor Peterson?
The council authorize administration to proceed?
With the rise in report?
We have the rise in report. Oh, we'll do it after.
Thank you for that.
That's the rule.
Thank you for that, Mr. Roycroft, and we'll be coming back to that later on in this meeting. Item six point two, youth club progress report. Sorry, um, welcome and, uh, welcome, I believe it's Aya, Aya?
Aya.
Aya, sorry, Aya, you're here with the youth club, and Linda, you're here with FCSS. So, welcome and, uh, thank you for your presentation, it's coming.
Yeah, so, um, I would like to start out to introduce everyone to Aya Hughes. So, Aya is a supervisor for the Child, Youth and Family Programs at the Youth Center. And Aya comes with a wealth of experience, education and knowledge in the areas of child youth development, strategic planning, program development, outcome-based research and evaluation, staff supervision and community engagement. So, we're really excited to have her, um, on board. So, the report is an update from the Child and Youth and Family Programs and Services of Strathmore from June two thousand and eighteen, when I did a presentation. And where we focused on the Town of Strathmore, um, youth, uh, Child and Youth Program model will support physical, social and emotional wellbeing of children and youth that is accessible to all and, and inclusive to all. And this conceptual framework aligns with several strategic plans, including the Town of Strathmore Strategic Plan. The framework and the program logic model will, will inform and drive decisions in developing, implementing and evaluating child and youth programs. And we're really excited about establishing community partnerships that will strengthen the community's capacity to deliver programs and services to children, youth and families within Strathmore. So, attached to your report, you have the, uh, progress report from, uh, July until October, when I presented, uh, previously, so I just wanted to share a few highlights with you. So, one of the big highlights is the development of interactive theme days targeting middle age, um, uh, grades, grade four to six, including an indigenous lens and including uh, grades, grade four to six, including an indigenous lens and including diversity for all, um, all of the community members. Staff have really been, um, involved in the transition and in, and are being provided with ongoing training. And so, that really helps with some of the transitioning that's going on and the education of really focusing on, uh, the program model a little differently and enhancing it from what it has been in the past. And like I already mentioned, the, the, uh, community development is just so focused on increasing partnerships and assisting in actually having a community hub of services, collaboratively working with other service providers. And some of the service providers that we've had develop new partnerships and enhance partnerships with have been, um, the, the school specifically with regards to the, um, the, the essential, essential edibles program and the life skill program and enhancing the summer care and the summer camp programs. So, for example, this summer, the school worked with us and provided funding for so many students to attend our summer camp programs that wouldn't otherwise be able to, um, attend. And so, we're just enhancing that relationship, um, with them. And even the speaker earlier, um, with the same kind of collaboration that he was talking about, the same kind of thing that we are doing in the diversity of our community and, and inclusive to all and just kind of building that bridge, uh, to bring everybody, to bring everybody closer together. And with that, what we're really focusing on is improving available, uh, resources, not to just to children and youth, but to families and the community as a whole. And so, one of the other areas we really want to focus on is, um, is the recreation kind of component of the, of the transitioning of the programming. And so, as you know, the participation of recreation programming with children and youth, they will have opportunities to socialize with their peers, develop positive relationships and improve their overall wellbeing and mental health. So, basically, with the new model and the focus, we believe that connecting children and youth with programming will increase outcomes and promote healthy development and instill confidence in the children, the youth and, and the families and the community as a whole. And so, as, as you're probably well aware, families who are well-connected and have support systems and have learned positive parenting skills will more likely be able to create positive relationships with their children to, um, to have more successful, improved outcomes. And so, just to end off, um, before we take any questions, we just wanted to really highlight that with the new program model and the different work that we're doing in the community, we have forty percent of our registrations right now of families we have never worked with before. So, that's really exciting to see, uh, new families coming in and accessing services. And so, with that, we're happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Montgomery. Counselor Cox is first, sorry.
Okay, your worship, thank you. I, I appreciate everything and it looks excellent and I love that last comment. That's huge. I have one small concern. It's not really that small. It's actually our largest population in Strathmore, what we found out last Wednesday, is ages ten to fourteen. Which means that you've lost them in two years. You've lost that whole, that biggest population in Strathmore within two years from now will not even be on your radar. And I'm concerned that maybe we need to focus something on them. Because I see you've gone six to twelve. I'm worried about thirteen to seventeen.
For sure. And we're worried about that age group too. And so, in part of this strategic planning, we're going to be, um, we're going to be reviewing everything. And right now, we had to focus on one particular area. And so, we needed to focus on, um, what was happening after school. And so, we really needed to put our time and effort into focusing on that age group right now while we're simultaneously doing things on the side. And our goal is to come back to council and report on, on things such as that as we have more of alignment as we're developing those initiatives.
And while I appreciate that, I mean, the survey just came out to us. It was only available last Wednesday. But I really see that as a huge priority for us moving forward. That is, the largest population of Strathmore is ten to fourteen. And they need to be a, a priority for us moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cox. Counselor Montgomery?
Uh, thank you, your worship. So, one question I had after reading through the report, uh, just had to do with asset or assets-based training. Like, I'm familiar with asset-based community development. Can you expand on what the training would be?
Thank you for your question, Counselor Montgomery. So, we're looking at positive youth outcomes. And when we're talking about assets, we're talking about the, um, the items, the characteristics, the skills that we need youth to have, um, to be successful in life. So, we'd be looking at training our, our internal staff to recognize what assets are valuable to children and youths and families and being able to help us build on the framework that we've, um, established at the time.
Okay. And, uh, I was also curious to know, just based on, on that, what are some of the ways that our youth can serve our community and what do you guys have planned in that regard?
In, in, just to clarify your question, how can you serve our community? Is that?
Well, after reading your report and, and doing a bit of research into, um, the Search Institute, uh, they talk about how it's important that, uh, youth are, you know, able to serve their community. And so, I was wondering what exactly you guys have planned for our youth to serve the community?
Definitely. So, what we're doing with respect to that right now is we're working with our partners to develop, to develop something. So, we're not the only service provider providing that service. And so, I can't give you, uh, a definite answer of what we would see because what we would do is we would work with our, all the other service providers in the community in, in area with respect to that. And then we would build something based on the youth's needs that we're working with. So, um, maybe it would be something similar like they did in the, in the, uh, summer programs on Friday. Every, I think, well, every Friday, they did some type of community service. They raised money and then they, at the end of the summer, they gave X amount of dollars to the, the children's hospital. Because that's what they decided was important to them to give back. So, maybe something along, maybe something along that line. And maybe something along the line that we're determining with the, um, with other partners and service providers that there needs to be, um, a youth advisory committee or, or something along, or something along that line. Maybe working with, um, the schools, um, enhancing our relationship with the schools is that we're, uh, complimentary, complementing, um, each other's programs and services where it comes to leadership and leadership development. And that diversity that our other speaker was talking about this evening, how we can, uh, put our resources together to be able to better enhance that and provide the kids the opportunity to lead that with adult mentors.
Okay. Uh, like, I certainly agree that, uh, it is an important, uh, thing to have our youth able to serve our community in various ways. Um, and so, I did like to see that in your report. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Montgomery. Deputy Mayor Bauer?
Hi, thank you, Linda. It's nice to meet you, Aia. How do I spell your name? AIA. AIA, thank you. I, um, am thankful for the report because it gives us, uh, a little bit of an, um, an update and, um, tells us the direction that you're going to go in, uh, you're going to for the after-school clubs, which I, I think is a really great idea. I was wondering whether or not you're engaging the parents and children after the, uh, club is done with feedback and an evaluation process. Is that something that you have? Yes, this is correct. We will be surveying all families, um, before the conclusion of programs so that we do get that feedback. Okay, great. And just to follow up on Counselor Cox's comments, I also believe that we need to have something for our, our youth. The youth was very involved with the youth club, uh, prior to you coming on. They would go in the mornings and grab a snack and then at lunchtime, they would go and get food. And there were con, there was a constant stream from the high school and the junior high. Has that changed now with the edible, uh, ed, the essential edibles program being removed? Are you still getting those kids coming through or has that stopped?
So, the essential edibles program has not been removed. Um, and so, it's the only second week of school. Um, and so, we didn't have an opportunity last week to directly, uh, connect. We've had some meetings with, um, some of the leaders in the school and some of the, uh, teacher reps for the school. So, we're still offering, we're s, still offering that specific program. Um, and in fact, we've, um, we're working with a sponsor for that program and we're working with the school really closely to see how we can, uh, collaborate a little bit differently specifically with that program. So, that service is still, uh, um, happening. And because it's the only second week of, uh, school, uh, the, the food that the kids pick up, the inside, it's all based on donations from the food bank. And so, whatever is donated from the food bank is put out and shared with, um, is shared with the kids. And so, because it's the only second week of school, we haven't really received a lot from the food bank with, with respect to that.
Okay, thank you. So, you don't at this time have, um, have plans to extinguish that program? You plan on continuing it?
That's correct.
Excellent. And is this now with the youth, the after-school club program, is it a more sustainable model to meet a balanced budget than what we saw before?
Yes, definitely. Because one of the things that we're, that we're doing is, and we'll talk more about this when we have an opportunity to meet a, a, a budget time specifically. But what, what it's providing is, um, it's providing, uh, a more streamlined of services that can actually transition over time, right? And so, for example, in the, um, in the next couple of months and, and into the new year, we're really going to be focusing and targeting on the age group of four to six, right, for that after-school. Not the age, but the grades four to six, um, for that after-school program. So, we can continue to expand on our services. And one of the other things we're really excited about is the opportunity to look at, uh, providing services in different, um, areas of the community. So, we're hoping long-term, over the next couple of years, the strategic plan is to reach out and just not have services available right at, um, at the Youth Center per se, but at some of the new, some of the other facilities, the new facility that the town has. Um, there's opportunity to work with the schools, um, at the other end of town where maybe some kids can't get over or whatever. And so, we're really looking at expanding long-term down the road and looking at that and really enhancing those services.
And how much does a parent pay currently, Linda, to have their child in after-school care? So, currently, excuse me, the after-school clubs are at ten dollars a day per child. Or if they prefer to have their child in full-time, then it's forty dollars per week per child. And then there's a bussing fee of ten dollars per month per child as well. And do you see that as being, um, is that affecting your, that you're, the fact that you're only getting twenty students coming back each day even though you have forty students registered? Is it the money or is it that they have other commitments?
So, traditionally, that's how it's always kind of worked. So, um, there's been a, a maximum, uh, cap on the registration. We've opened that cap up to continue taking, uh, registrations. So, we may have, I don't, I don't know exactly what it is, but we may have like fifty, fifty kids register for all our programs, but parents pick which days their, their kids want to attend, right? So, maybe they have another after-school activity on Tuesday. So, they only come Monday, Wednesday, Thursday and Friday.
So, it's not a drop-in program? They are letting you know ahead of time so you can staff accordingly?
Definitely, yes.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Bauer. Counselor Peterson?
So, lots of my questions have been answered. I really appreciate it and I appreciate the, the thoroughness of the report. So, so, one of the things, there's threshold testing at this point. Am I, am I correct? Because at, at your current, uh, it's about, it's what would be fifty-three percent less per day than the after-school program being provided by Golden Hills School Division, I think?
I'm not exactly sure of the amount, but approximately, I would say you're correct on that, yes.
And, and so, I am, um, really, really appreciative of the work that I, that I hear being done in all the areas that you've been connecting to with regards to the gap analysis that you've been doing. And, and I appreciate where you're putting your focus because I, I certainly have no appetite to continue in the, in the, with the trajectory that we had in the past. And so, I really, really appreciate this, this enormous effort to, to focus in on the gaps that you've identified. And, and as somebody that has a gajillion grandchildren, it, it's evident that you have really adequately, you know, and more than adequately focused on the most vulnerable populations that our community has. And I'm not as concerned about that ten to fourteen population and definitely the twelve to fourteen-year-olds. There, there are, uh, identified a lot of, uh, opportunity in the community and including, um, home alone processes for, for kids that, uh, ensure that they're not as vulnerable and that they have those assets that you, that you so articulately talked about. And when I, when I, I really appreciate Counselor Montgomery's, uh, attention to the, um, whole idea of a service-based model for community youth. I think it's something that our community hasn't attended to enough. And I remember many years ago, I asked an educational guru about, you know, how, how do you connect especially disaffected youth to community? And, and one of the things that he said to me, and, and I know Counselor Field's probably snoring by now with my stories. But, uh, sorry, Mayor Field. But, uh, one of the things that he said to me is that, uh, it is a responsibility of all adults, especially adults in leadership in a community to, to provide spaces for young people in a community to understand that, that they belong and that they are loved. And in order to do that, those adults need to provide loving things for them to do for their community. And, and I, I really, um, have seen that work in, uh, community that care models, um, across, uh, British Columbia and some places in our province. So, I appreciate seeing that reflected in this document. And, um, and I'm really hopeful, uh, that we can, um, provide the services and contain the costs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Peterson. Uh, I just had one question and that was, is this the first time that, uh, the school division has sponsored summer camp children? Because I think that's a great, a great initiative because, uh, what a, what a way to get more kids in our summer program and have them be a partner in it with, have the school division be a partner. So, it is the first time?
Yes, it's the first time and that's where we had the increase of forty percent of families we haven't worked with. A lot of those families had never accessed the services before and through the opportunity through the school to access the service, they are now continuing to, um, use the services that are, that are available for them.
And just in addition to that, the, the schools have done a really great job in, in terms of advocating for those. And that speaks well to you in, in finding the gaps in our community-based services and I really appreciate it.
Uh, no other questions or comments? Thank you very much for your report and continued, uh, best, best of luck with your program. We will be watching with enthusiasm, see how things go and welcome to our staff.
Thank you.
This brings us to item six point three, the SMP Sports Center Fees. Mark, welcome.
Thank you, uh, thank you, I don't know which one's working here. Uh, thank you, your, your worship and council. Uh, before I begin with our, uh, our presentation, which is up there as well, I'd like to introduce Marcy Britton as our Sports Center programmer. Uh, Marcy is responsible for the day-to-day operations of the facility, including scheduling, coordinating athletic spaces, uh, facility rentals and things like that. Uh, Marcy's a native, uh, native of Hazzar here and graduated from Mount Royal University. Uh, she's previously worked for the last five years for the City of Brooks in a, in developing recreation sport and leisure programs. So, excited to have Marcy here and I'd like to thank her for her efforts putting this document together for council. Uh, alright, saying that, here we go. So, um, behind you now, or I guess on your screen here, is a comparison that we, that Marcy and I completed um, with a number of municipalities within the province of similar size and, um, and, uh, similar amenities as to the SMP Sports, uh, Sports Center. As you can see here, there's a number of categories that, um, other facilities are, um, have, uh, are charging in terms of their fee structure for drop-ins. And you can see our recommendations at the bottoms and where we fit in alignment with some of those other ones. It's a difficult process to compare apples to apples because every facility is different. Um, some facilities that we looked at, um, may have a quote-unquote "fieldhouse", but they're not offering that athletic with a artificial turf. Um, some do have an artificial turf, others, um, have fitness centers or pools that are connected to it. So, um, ours is a unique entity, um, so it's, it's very difficult to have a side-by-side comparison. In addition to the research that we've conducted, um, and based on the other municipalities, we took into consideration, uh, a survey that was, uh, produced by the Healthy, Healthy Eating and Active Living, um, Correlation, HEAL. I think that was, uh, done in November or December of 2017. Um, there you can see some of the elements that we've taken from it in terms of accessing the walking track. Um, majority would be willing to pay and a value of approximately two to, one, 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 excuse me, one to two dollars, which is in line with our recommendation. Last week, Marcy was able to attend REVs and, um, ask some additional feedback from those people that were attending there in terms of the, uh, the admission price to use the, the walking track. Again, it's in line with both HEAL and our recommendation. Again, it's in line with both HEAL and our recommendation. And um and then a drop-in fee, and you can see that it's approximately in line at five dollars with what we're recommending recommending to council. Um, here is the uh membership rates uh based on um both for uh drop-ins for for accessing the lacrosse field, as well as member, annual memberships, and then walking track only. And then the last slide here relates specifically to sport field rentals. Um, we're, that what we're proposing is a prime time and a non, excuse me, a prime season as well, and off-season pricing, as well as prime time and non-prime, to maximize um both uh revenue and usage of the facility. Um, the one thing that we challenged, that we struggled with, um was an exclusive facility rental in the event that we have a large trade show that's looking to utilize the entire facility. Um, so we did some calculations on, I think, a a maximum daily use of, I think it was nine, eight or nine hours, and we came up with that number based on the prime and non-prime seasons. So at this time, um, the next steps for us in terms of um moving on beyond council is uh once we have, um, I guess the council has an opportunity to provide any questions or feedback based on these, on these items here, uh, we're going to share these with our user groups, um, get their impact or get their um input on the costs. Um, again, share it with the members of HEAL, who have helped us uh with some of our research. Um, sharing it with uh FCSS and the community agency groups, so that they can understand um how this is, what the next steps is. And then finally, ask for the joint use agreement with Wheatland County Council. And then after this point, we bring it back to council for final approval.
Thank you, Mark. I think it was Counselor Montgomery, then Counselor Cox, then I'm lost.
Thank you, worship. Uh, thanks for putting this report together, Mark. I wanted some clarification on on how the facility will be set up with regards to um, I guess, like the front desk. And then like, uh, like how many, like, I assume we're going to have one person manning a central front desk?
Uh, yes, that'd be, it'd be, uh, one person would open the facility, then we'd have probably, we're interviewing or or in the process of applying uh accepting applications for a sports center assistant, so we could stagger our staff. And then once those full-time staff would be uh leaving the facility, we would have a number of casual staff that would then man the facility, uh, whether it be one or two, based on the facility usage.
Okay. And so you'd have somebody kind of walking around, like, making sure people aren't going into areas they're not supposed to or something?
Yes, I ideally, obviously, we'd have have uh one facility man, or a facility person at the at the desk. Um, and depending on the facility usage, that person could then do um hourly rounds, or we'd have two people um to to do that. Our, our, my concern or our concern is obviously to maximize um maximize our ability to staff the the facility properly without having any excess waste. So we're going through that number we presented in our budget uh for council later on this year.
Okay. Um, and so I I saw like, you know, like the the kind of tentative hours that were proposed. Uh, what days of the week will those hours be in effect?
Um, so I think there's there's two numbers. There's, right now, I think it's uh sorry, I think it's uh, we'd have longer hours on the weekends for for those things, so um, just don't see it on me right now. But I think it's uh eight to to ten o'clock, Monday to Friday, and then I think it's eight uh, eight to six on the weekends.
Okay. And so I guess like something, and so maybe you could tell me if I'm right here. Uh, so a drop-in pass or a facility pass will not include access to the walking track?
No, uh, so a full drop-in one um would include all access to the facility. The challenge that we would obviously face is if somebody's interested just in the walking track alone, um, there's not a lot of systems set up that would um, that would enable us to just have isolated on the walking track. So one of the strategies that we're obviously looking at, strategies from other municipalities, what they use. Um, a wristband system is one example, that uh if somebody's going to use the wa- the walking track alone, that they would have a, they would get a wristband. And that would, that would indicate to staff that they shouldn't be having access to the gymnasium or the lacrosse field or things like that.
Sure. Um, I I was just picturing somebody walking with a lacrosse racket, you know, saying they're going on the walking track or something like that, but um. And so if we move to year-round ice, uh, will the prime season rates extend year-round then?
Uh, if we move to summer ice?
Yeah.
Um.
Cause I'm, like, in the report, it says that that's kind of one of the reasons why you have the prime season versus non-prime?
Yeah, so after meeting with the the Strathmore Lacrosse Group, their season runs approximately after hockey. Um, so probably like March or or maybe April to about uh July and things like that. So in order to maximize the season there and in terms of our revenue numbers, we wanted to extend our prime time, uh, our prime season to capture those um, those, that user group. Um, in the event that we have uh summer ice or we were potentially going down that way, this would drive uh lacrosse directly into one, one facility as opposed to using both facilities right now. It's their, which could be their plan.
Yeah. So like in that, in the event of that happening, like, would you guys then say, like, there is no non-prime season?
Potentially, right now, like I said, uh, with lacrosse season, with it ending in July and August, there, those are downtimes for us.
Okay.
So there's, there's potential that those could be slower, and that's hence the reduced rate.
Okay. And and something I was curious about is, how will the collection of fees be handled? And will we be paying someone to take fees and how, you know, like, so I guess I'm, I'm concerned about, you know, the amount of money that'll be spent to collect a certain amount of money, um, so.
In terms of staffing the front desk to collect admissions?
Yeah.
So definitely, that's a concern. That's one of the things, why do we want to minimize the number of staff that would be on? Um, that role, that individual would be not just to collect uh front uh admission, but to ob- obviously set up the facility for any of our user groups and doing those those checks. There'd be, there, there potentially could be gaps in terms of the coverage there, but because it is a secure facility, um, they'd have to either get buzzed in or uh or wait till the attendant comes back.
Okay. Okay. And and are you guys looking at any sort of automated um entry system?
Yeah, so that's what I was just mentioning, because the facility is is, has the capability, well, I guess it's secure. Um, anybody who purchases a a membership could scan and go.
Okay.
And anybody who's looking for a drop-in or a walking track access that doesn't have a swipe card or a a fob, um, they would have to wait for the attendant if they're not uh at the front counter.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much for answering this.
Thank you, Counselor Montgomery. Uh, Counselor Cox?
Thank you, worship. I know maybe I'm out of bounds, but we did at one point discuss um connecting all of the recreation facilities. So I'm wondering, like, you've you've given us great memberships and everything for just this facility, but I'm wondering where or if or when we're going to encapsulate all the other recreation facilities, because I think it only makes sense to try and get it as quickly around this facility as we can. And I know we've had some issues as far as, you know, public skating, there's no, you know, there's never anybody there. But if we can calculate that into these memberships, I think we'd be doing ourselves a better service. Is there plans for that?
Uh, yes, so to create an all-access membership pass for all our town facilities, excuse me, is there a plan for twenty nineteen? Uh, I think uh what I've, what I've seen here and through Marcy's research, um, we've tried to keep some consistency in terms of our pricing and our categories for our, um, that exist within at the pool or at the family center, and now at the sports center. And through our research, we've identified some inconsistencies based on other things like that. And so as a result, um, we'll, I will be asking staff to do a thorough and complete review of both of our fees as well as those categories for admission for twenty nineteen. So to present back to council, along with our, some research as to facility utilization um for the new sports center.
Thank you, Counselor Cox. Counselor Sobel?
Thank you, worship. Mark, you and your staff have done a good job on this, um, and I'm probably jumping the gun on this, but you mentioned the word "trade show", um, so my question is, um, going forward, uh, is there going to be an effort on uh, on the town's behalf to attract uh trade shows? Just, and perhaps both RV uh car uh car shows?
Yes, I think I ideally, we'd like to have that type of business in our slower times, which would be probably, you know, during the day. Um, we've already, I've already engaged in one conversation with somebody who was looking to access to create a little bit of a trade show, welcome for, in September. Uh, not our cars and RVs, but more of like a back-to-school type of thing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they were interested in September, and obviously, uh, that timeframe was coming and gone, so.
Sure.
Um, at at the end of the day, I think, once we figure out um the needs of our user groups and of our, of our community, then we can start to actively engage and and seek out some of those trade shows to potentially maximize our revenue and our usage of the facility.
On the radar.
Hopefully.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sobel. Deputy Mayor Bauer?
Thank you, worship. Um, thank you, Mark, for your report. Um, I would like to know, um, if we're going to be tracking where users are from?
Yeah, so uh, we are in the process of implementing a new recreation software system. Uh, that'll happen probably in early twenty nineteen. Uh, that'll give us an ability to um, to better track both our residents within the community, within our, via postal code, or or non-residents, whether they be outside of the town of Strathmore limits. Um, we're going to be starting uh an official uh tracking method at the pool, uh, probably in the next week or two, to see about, we can identify whether they're residents of Strathmore or non-residents, uh, maybe, so.
I just think we have a a responsibility uh with the partnership to Wheatland County to also let their um county members know that we are recognizing them as being able to use the facility. And if we can track members and be able to, you know, if I can let Wheatland County know that um their members are using the facility, it would uh, it would be nice to be able to report at the Wheatland partnership meetings.
Yes, ideally, and our new software eventually allow us to drill down to some uh better, better membership information, better drop-in information, so we can have some more beneficial staff that would help us make decisions based on our facility usage and uh program registration, uh, not just for the sports center, but for all our facilities.
Would you consider just doing a a soft launch of that, or or just to do paper, paper statistics just for October, November, December?
That's exactly what we're planning on doing, yeah.
Good. And then which user groups in town have expressed the desire to bring funds to help with the purchasing of turf or boards for the Strathmore Motor Products Center?
So unfortunately, our conversations with both lacrosse, soccer, and baseball um have, have not yet yielded any financial contributions from any of these groups. Um, lacro- baseball seems very interested in participating, um, and purchasing some um, baseball-specific sporting equipment. Um, but in terms of, obviously, they don't need boards or anything like that. Um, lacrosse, um, seems like they're uh, from my, based on our meetings with them, they're waiting for their casino application to be accepted later this fall before they be willing to discuss any financial contributions towards uh the facility or the equipment. Um, soccer has expressed some desire to, uh, not financially, but to share some of their soccer, existing soccer nets that could be utilized within the facility, but no financial contribution.
So the facility is going to be opening in October, and um we are going to need to start making money on the rentals. So if we don't have turf, who are we able to rent that facility to?
Um, well, we anticipate we're having turf for for our opening in in October. Um, the question is, if you're right about um availability for the uh, for our, I guess, the user groups. Um, our conversations have, because of the the timing of the facility, they weren't sure when it was open. They've already made commitments for the fall season, I would say that, or fall um, fall months, where they're practicing indoors at the uh local gymnasiums through the high schools and things like that. So they've made, they've signed agreements uh with the high schools to commit for those months, but they, we anticipate them coming back over to the sports center in January.
So there's a possibility that the sports center may be empty for the next three months?
Um, I would say there's a, I think we'll still have an opportunity to attract some groups that are going to be interested in there, but some of the groups have already committed to other, other facilities.
Okay, and then for January, or in January, being that uh, there'll be uh, it's a, well, let's just say, soccer runs all year round, and lacrosse is a very short twelve-week season. Is there an opportunity to, if if the lacrosse people are not willing to bring some money to the table, is there a possibility that they could stay in the arena space and that we could just do soccer out of the rec center?
Yes, that's a definitely possibility. We're, that's one of the things that we're exploring, the idea of of right, of keeping ice or in, during the summer or not keeping it. Um, in the case of of lacrosse, where they could be over just at the blue arena, maybe summer ice in the gold arena, and then have the sports center for soccer usage, uh, maybe exclusively with other renters that we haven't yet identified. Baseball, for example, has come to the table wishing to to have one or two practices a week. Um, there's a number of other groups that, you know, whether it's ultimate frisbee or um on the turfs, uh, sorry, on the turf, we might also have adult sport leagues, um, such as badminton or volleyball, basketball, or soccer. So it's our goal that we can supplement any of the user groups that aren't looking for time with the development of adult recreational leagues or fitness programming.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Bauer. Just before I go back to Counselor Montgomery, uh, I had a quick, couple of quick questions. Uh, one is, and I know Counselor Montgomery is waiting for this with bated breath. Has there been any thought to uh giving um seniors a walking rate pass of one dollar? And I'm thinking of Counselor Sobel as he enters his golden years, to try to make it as reasonable as possible for him. Yeah. Yeah. So any thoughts to, uh, I I see you've discounted other things, but, pardon me? Seniors' walking is what it's, it's listed as two dollars.
Two dollar drop.
So I was saying, is there any thought of, has there been any thought of cutting that back to one dollar for our seniors?
I think uh we obviously reevaluate all our, all our fee structures within the first six months. Um, leading forward, uh, I think, at the end of the day, we're not doing it the town and the council uh service if we don't review that based on our utilization. Um, if we find that there's downtimes um throughout the um, throughout the season, maybe there's an opportunity to attract um seniors and other groups to, with a discounted or a reduced rate of dollars or free times, uh, to attract and to um, um, increase the utilization of the facility.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Montgomery. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Um, I I just had a question about whether you guys considered doing like family rates for the walking track, cause it could get kind of prohibitive for a family to show up a few days a week.
Um, and not for the the walking track alone, but we do have family passes um for the entire facility.
Right, but I'm I'm asking like specific to just the walking track?
Um, that's obviously, that's something that we can, we'll take note of and uh potentially uh see what the value is based on that and based on our numbers, and we can definitely look into that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Montgomery. Counselor Peterson?
Uh, your worship, I remember the erudite Ms. Simpson talking about how they might do some threshold testing for uh particularly disadvantaged groups in in community, but also um around encouraging other groups that might not necessarily have great access, like the uh persons with developmental disabilities and those agencies. I was wondering if if you had uh additional work, and and I, and I just want to echo my fellow counselors' comments on the thorough work. I really appreciate all the information.
Um, yeah, so one of the ideas we have is to set a a fee structure that is um, that is affordable for everyone. But then through our programming model, look at opportunities um to attract um more seniors, people with disabilities or any other disadvantaged group in town to, to increase their access to the facility. But we see a a more benefit doing that through our program model as opposed to our fee structure. Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor Peterson. If there are no other questions, uh, thank you for your report. And then you'll be coming forward with the final recommendations for us to approve?
That's correct, after we uh speak with our user groups, um, and anybody else involved, and then obviously Wheatland County.
Thank you very much. Item six point four, Strategic Planning Policy. Doug Legore, Mr. Legore, welcome tonight. Page fifty-seven of your brochure.
The last couple of years, council has has developed and adopted a strategic plan, and I commend you for that. Uh, it certainly sets the vision for the council and the community. But more than that, it shows direction to your senior management team of where you want to go. And on the next item, we'll come into that much more detail. This policy basically commits council to reviewing the strategic plan on an annual basis. It needs to be a living document. You need to update it annually, and that's what this policy is committing to. And I'm prepared to answer any questions, Mr. Bear.
Thank you, Mr. Legore. Any questions from council? Seeing none? Good, that's good. Thank you very much for that presentation. Are you staying up for the corporate plan as well?
Yes, Mr. Peterson.
Okay, thank you.
So before you, we have printed a larger edition of it for you. It's much easier to read. So over the past few months, your management team has been working on developing this corporate plan. And the corporate plan itself is the projects that administration feels that are required to basically implement the vision that you have developed in your strategic plan. And then we've also attached the additional projects that have been identified through your annual operating capital budgets. So this whole document that you see before you becomes integral to the budget process. So your administration will bring this forward to you during the budget process, and then you will prioritize which projects you want to implement first. The others do not fall off the list, they stay on the list, but they get extended out a year or two, whatever your timeframe is. So really, at this time, this is just information for you, but it shows you what you have on your books. And I think it also shows you that you probably don't have the resources to do all this, either financially or human resources. But this is what you need within the community, fulfill that vision that you've developed. And with that, I'm prepared to answer any questions.
Thank you, Councilor Peterson.
I apologize if my question is filled with ignorance, but when we enter into a corporate structure, a plan, a plan around developing a, a corporate plan, how, how does the municipal development plan fit into that? And where should it be?
The municipal development plan is separate from your corporate plan. Municipal development plan is really, where do you want to go from a development perspective? What you see on the map there. The corporate plan is what it takes to fulfill the vision of council that you developed under your strategic plan.
Because, Mr. Legore, it seems to me, and, you know, and I'm, I'm not, not completely new to council, but it, it seems to me that there is a, a significant gap right now, and, and maybe it's just in all the changes and all the things that we've undertaken, between our municipal development plan and our corporate strategic plan. So when council does strategic planning, does the municipal development plan come, come in that portion? Like, I, I understand the difference between the ideation and the business model.
Okay.
But I'm struggling to find where our input fits as a council.
Okay, your municipal development plan, if I'm correct, is up for review. I think it's even identified in the corporate plan here as when it's done.
So following that, that's my exact issue, because when I reference my, our municipal development plan, which, which is, as you say, it, it isn't always linking to what I see here.
I don't get that. I'm not understanding.
There may not be a direct link between your MDP and your corporate plan.
That seems like a problem.
Well, I think I, I'm, I'm trying to understand where you're coming from, but there's things within your corporate plan that have nothing to do with an MDP.
Right, and there are lots of things, and I understand that, but there's also things in an MDP that impact the corporate plan.
Yes.
And, and then the, then there are areas where there are not just gaps, where, where, where there isn't agreement. And that's where I have confusion.
Okay, and what your administration needs to do is review that MDP, and where there is a gap or cost conflict, as an example, then they need to address that through council, either through the corporate plan or an amendment or revision to the MDP. Does that explain it?
Thank you, Council Peterson. Any other questions or comments? Once again, thank you, Mr. Legore, for your presentation. Oh, sorry, we have Council Montgomery.
So you guys are gonna hate me for this even more so, but, so I noticed there's a spelling mistake. You guys have philosophy instead of philosophy of performance management.
Another question?
Thank you, Mr. Legore. And that brings us to item 6.6, deals with economic development coming from administration.
Thank you, Your Worship. We're bringing this forward to council for information. So what we have done, so administration, sorry, has been approached by some local real estate agents for the town to take some initiative in promoting the town of Strathmore. So this has gone through our communications department, and we have developed an ad that we would like to place in a number of publications, as well as transit, on some transit buses, and we'd also like to do some radio ads. The sample of the ad that we're proposing is on page four of the document. Our communications has come up with this ad, where Strathmore Country Living Meets City Life. Funds for the advertising are coming out of the economic development budget, so we already have funding available to do this, and we just wanted to bring it forward to council to have a look at and to provide any comment.
Council Peterson?
I just noticed in our, in our logo, we haven't changed that yet?
Yeah.
That little redundancy? Where quality is a way of life?
No, that, the logo has not been changed. We can adjust the ad to take it out.
Is council all right with that change to the logo?
Well, I don't want to take it out. And you can't change it?
No, she said, yeah, the logo, just take out the quality is a way of life.
No, you want to leave it the way it is?
No, I want to change it to what it's supposed to.
Okay.
Can we do it?
So are we going to?
No?
Are we changing it to quality is a way of life? Adjust that? Okay. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? And how soon did you say, I'm sorry that you were gonna be doing this?
So we would like to get this out as soon as we can. Our thoughts were next week.
Thank you.
The person who decided to do this? Smart.
Sorry, Council Cox, then Council Sobel?
Thank you, Your Worship. My apologies, Council Sobel. I'm wondering, is there any way we could get a picture of the new walking truck?
I'm sure there is. We can definitely replace any of those pictures.
Can we, we can't? No.
So I just wanted to also mention that this is just preliminary. This is moving us into a whole nother kind of campaign that we want to take to a different level in spring. But this is just for this fall, getting, getting started.
Thank you. Council Sobel?
Thank you. So this is like amazing. I see Krebs on here. Drives me crazy. I'm a daily reader of the Herald, and reading these weekly Kreb portions and never seeing Strathmore drives me crazy, so I'm gonna be really looking forward to it. Quick question, though, is, do we know what radio station we're putting this on?
So we have researched a number of radio stations. They all come in approximately the same cost and they all kind of offer the, the same thing. The price quoted in this is for $6.60, but that's a discussion we have to, we have to decide on, yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Council Sobel. I think it looks great. I, I applaud your, the staff for, for working on this and Carla and the communications department. I think it's, it's gonna do a great job for us, and as you said, it's phase one or part one of what we want to keep doing, so I think this is a great start. Thank you very much to all who were involved. Now, at this time, Jan, if I can turn to you for your wisdom, do we rise and report to make some motions? We have to move to committee of the whole?
I'll move to committee of the whole, Your Worship.
Thank you for that. All in favor?
What did I do with my notes? Your Worship.
Could I just ask one procedural question? I thought we didn't make motions in committee of the whole, so how do you make a motion to come out of, committee of the whole? Accept that one, okay. I'm still learning. Councilor Peterson, I gave you some time there, I was stalling for you there.
Your Worship, I would like to move that council authorize administration to proceed with the demolition and replacement of the derelict, I love that adjective, Kinsman Pump House with a new observation dock and that funds from the project be drawn from the funds allocated to dredging Kinsman Lake.
Thank you, you've all heard the motion, is there any discussion? All in favor?
It's a Vancouver term. Move to adjourn, Your Worship.
Sorry, Councilor, Councilor Corbille.
Thank you.
Council Corbille, yep, Corbille, sorry.
May I make another quick motion?
Sure.
Just, I move to, um, where is that? This part? That we accept the positive youth development domains program model as information, for information.
Thank you, you've all heard that motion? Any discussion? All in favor? And do we also need a motion as far as the corporate and strategic planning policy as far as acceptance? I think we do. So we're looking for motions on those as well? Council Peterson?
Well, first, can we, can we move the community and the Strathmore Water Park Center admission membership rates, information, for information, sorry?
Thank you, Council Peterson, you've heard that motion? All in favor? Motion, which is on page 57, about the strategic planning policy. He said, hinting desperately. Councilor Corbille?
I move that council accept the strategic planning policy as information.
Thank you very much, Council Corbille. You've all heard that motion? All in favor? And then the corporate one? Correct? Deputy Mayor Bauer?
I move that council accept the corporate plan as information.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Bauer. All in favor? And carried? Jennifer, are you looking for a motion on the ad campaign as well? No? Mr. Thackeray from administration?
Yes, Your Worship.
So would we amend the motions then to accept it as information and then adopt them?
I accept.
Council Peterson, you're? Okay, so you've heard the friendly amendment? All in favor? And that is carried. And now?
I move to go in camera.
Thank you, Council Corbille, all in favor? And we're now going in camera at 8:48 PM.
Your Worship.